I will go ahead and call this meeting to a quarter and just say happy Friday. It is January 22nd, the time is 3:32. Just want to say welcome to everybody, to all of our colleagues, our team. And thank you for joining us on this Friday afternoon. Want to welcome our guests, Mr. Guerra, Mr. Fraley, and actually Natus for joining us today. So good to have you with us on this Friday afternoon. And thank you for being with us, everybody. So with that, we will, let me read our board norms and protocols. As a board, we agree to respect the differences of opinions and making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. So with that, Ms. Smith, hello, good to see you. Would you please do a roll call for us? Thank you.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Dr. Yeager.
Present.
Thank you.
We thank you. We're going to take a motion to approve today's special agenda.
So who?
Then seconded, thank you, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. So we'll go ahead and jump right into our agenda. Today we have our guests and our friends with JG Consulting, who were supporting our district and our board with our superintendent search. So I want to welcome them and thank them for joining us today. Board members, you should have received earlier this week a couple of documents that they're going to walk us through today's meeting. So hopefully you had a chance to review all of that and come prepared with any questions or thoughts that you might have. I know James and his team are going to walk us through and facilitate the conversation. Also, just please, at some point, we will also try to nail down the date. I know Ms. Smith has been working to try to get a firm date for our next meeting in March. And so we want to try to turn those up so that James and his team can put that in his calendar and we can as well. So hopefully before we end today, we can at least get that early March date solidified. And then maybe even some of the later dates that we were looking at as well. So with that, James, thank you, and I will pass it along to you.
Thank you, Board President Lopez. Hello, everybody. Good to see all of you virtually. How's the weather in KCK right now? Is it still cold, cold, snowing? Well, I brought that snow back to Texas with me the very next day after seeing you guys during my last trip. So I can't deny that I don't dislike the snow. It was nice to see it here in Austin. But anyway, thanks for having us this afternoon. I hope that the documentation we provided prior to today's meeting will help us with the dialogue and the discussion. But prior to jumping into the summary report, we'll go in two orders. Or three now, excuse me. We'll first address your board priorities and goals and talk about how we've woven your priorities as a board into the summary report and the leadership profile. So we'll start with a quick dialogue about that. We'll transition into the summary report and then we'll finish by reviewing the leadership profile and then getting your blessing to begin the actual search for your next superintendent upon your approval of the leadership profile. So just as a quick recap and a reminder for my team and for us to acknowledge your board strategic priorities, you'll notice a number of common themes interwoven within the summary report and also the leadership profile. So just by a quick way of order, your board and strategic priorities consist of safe and respectful learning environments for your scholars and staff, high expectations for student achievement, communication and marketing, which you'll see periodically throughout the summary report, and the leadership profile, good stewards of our resources and being fiscally responsible, high performing workforce. So to us, that's human capital. So it also begins and ends within the human capital component. And then last but not least, positive community relations and partnership. So we thought it would be best just to address your six priority goals and acknowledge that those are at the forefront of what we're thinking about as we review the summary report and the leadership profile. So at any point, do we need to incorporate these board priority goals more specifically into the leadership profile? We can do so as we review that component at the end. So what we typically like to do to start the dialogue and the conversation, since you've had time to review the summary report, are there any questions or concerns or is there anything that stood out that you'd like to ask us about? And so I'll just open the floor to acknowledge any questions and explain how we arrived to certain statements that are included in that all encompassing summary report. And if there are no questions, that's okay. Happy to just address some of the themes that you found in the summary report. Beginning on page three, the synopsis is just an overview of what we've heard. So, you know, we took the data that we were able to capture from not only the virtual town hall meetings that we conducted with your staff and with Board President Lopez and then our wonderful translator to support me in my weak Spanish speaking abilities. So we had those opportunities in a number of other Zoom and conference call meetings. So the feedback in the report encompasses the various voices that we've heard from. So by way of recommendation, and again, some of the themes interwoven within your own board priorities, you'll see certain verbiage that speaks to committing to communicating the same message relative to the stage of the superintendent's search process. We'll continue to provide weekly status reports through the duration of the superintendent's search. We'll participate in board meetings. And last but not least, we'll continue to engage the community. There was a question asked of us earlier by Mr. Birch, whether or not we want to keep the survey open for an indefinite period of time. We typically defer to the board. So if the board wants to continue to receive input from the community, we can keep the survey open indefinitely. So I didn't respond to him intentionally because I wanted to pose that question this afternoon with the understanding that we were meeting today. So what is the general thought of keeping the survey open versus closing the survey?
My question is, if it's left open, would you get the information and utilize it? And therefore, we would be updated with the information that is presented?
That's correct. So we can do two things. So if you'd like to see the full report in its entirety, with the vast number of submissions that we've received on your behalf, the document PDF that we export could be somewhere close to 200 pages. But what we look for is anything that stands out by way of new information. So if it's not some of the consistent themes that we've heard so far and it catches our attention, then we'll update you with the new information. So that could be a number of things. But we typically would keep the survey open just indefinitely through the entirety of the process, just so the community still has an opportunity to share input and feedback if they didn't have a chance to do so during any of the previous meetings that were scheduled.
Thank you.
Yeah. So would it be appropriate to keep it open just for, you know, the length of time that we're working together? I mean, it's easy as turning a light switch on or off. For us, it's just a matter of logging into our subscription and deactivating it. But it's also, it's no other cost incurred with it for us. So it's just a feature that can be running on its own independently of us. We receive automated notifications once somebody submits a survey.
So this is Yolanda. I like the idea of keeping it on, and this is probably not a question for you. This is maybe a statement or to our communications department of just making sure our public knows that it's still there and it's still available for them to still use. So maybe how we communicate if it's still open to them as a resource.
I would also like to suggest that we keep it open up until the time we have our individuals who are going to be chosen for the position of superintendent. And then after that, we would stop it.
Okay, yeah. And what we can do when we provide you with your binders, we can include a copy or we'll provide a digital copy of the survey data. So that way you have that PDF to reference as you're screening and vetting the candidates. So I think that will give you another understanding of what your constituents, the staff and the students are saying. So I think that's a good idea. We can do it up until that point. Okay, so I'll make note of that. So that's a part of the recommendations of the first primary component, page three of the summary report. Now, as far as the outcomes, we just discussed the consistent messaging. That's something that we need to all agree to, that the importance for that is to create continuity. Designated media representatives, I'll continue to serve as a designated media rep at the will of the board. And I apologize, there's an error in this. So it'd be myself and Board President Lopez. And then the weekly status updates will continue. Town hall meetings will continue as planned, if necessary, if we need further town hall meetings. So point being, we wouldn't stop. We wouldn't stop any of the community engagement meetings unless you asked us to. So we'll continue to engage the community for as long as you wish. All right, so just moving right along, if there's no questions about that piece, you'll see a few screenshots of the data. So the data that we're able to disaggregate, you can kind of see where the priorities are. And I'm on page five right now. So if you look at the order of importance, five being the highest order of priority, one being the lowest of the five categories, they were all pretty much in line with one another. There's not too many deviations from strong communicator down to the ability to make and defend difficult decisions. So it was pretty consistent across the board. And you guys had a really high response rate for the surveys, higher than average. So that's good. Your community is really active and involved. The largest and the greatest perspective can be attributed to your staff and your faculty. So you'll see that more than 70% of the responses came from your staff and faculty. And then second, in that same degree, would be your parents and your legal guardians with former students and alumni falling into third. So a pretty good broad mix of responses from different community members and staff. So we thought that was really positive. And then the timeline to Board President Lopez's point earlier, you know, we need to still identify a date where we can, you know, discuss some of the other major milestones and themes. So we'll need to identify a date and a time where we can present the candidates, discuss round one and round two of interviews, naming a lone finalist and so forth. So those are just some of the other areas that we should try to accomplish today as far as our goals. The synopsis of what we all collectively agreed upon as a board of education, several facets, five objectives that we feel align well and also correlate to your board priorities, serving the academic needs of all students and to continue to expand the learning opportunities for those students, a commitment to effective communication protocols, both internal and external, intentional focus to implement a strategic plan, community engagement with clear and concise communication, and then last but not least, board of education and superintendent collaboration. And then by way of recommendations for the incoming superintendent, as a consulting firm, we will recommend to the eminent superintendent that he or she prepare a 90-day entry plan for the board, propose the 90-day entry plan to support the current goals and your strategic priorities, and then the district goals, of course, aligned to those priorities. Engage in a team building exercise, whether that be a retreat, a workshop, some sort of team building exercise for the board of education and the superintendent. And then finally, during the transition, annually, the district hosts a variety of town hall meetings. So I think it's good practice by way of recommendation to continue engaging the community in a macro setting. I thought the format that we use, the hybrid virtual slash in-person livestream was really successful. You guys set the bar really high. That was, I thought, a huge success. And then the goals aligned to the recommendations. Again, always ensuring dialing it back to the academic performance of all students with expanded learning opportunities, new strategies for communication and productive district relations to continue the growth of those, community inclusion, a renewed plan for engaging new and existing community partners to galvanize support, especially during the time of COVID, because that's, I think, one of the greatest challenges we all face. And then on page eight, we've captured the feedback and grouped them into three categories that you can see, the table that is identified on page eight with the board members or staff and then the community. So we've tried to capture it in a very synthesized manner with the different bullets and the different themes. You'll notice across the spectrum from board to community and in between with the staff, the themes were very consistent. So we called attention to those details and tried to articulate it in a way and to convey that to you that makes sense. And this ultimately is what drove the leadership profile that we'll be discussing next. And before we move on to the profile, just want to pause and ask if there are any questions or concerns about the summary report.
For the summary, I think it's important to add in a community welcoming. Last time when we brought in a superintendent, we did not have like a community welcoming, a meet and greet type of event for the community to know them. And I think it's so important for us to not have like an official town hall type of a thing, but just a relaxed coffee chat, something of that nature, in a relaxed setting for them to get to know us and them as a community.
Like that idea.
Hey, James, I have a question here. And thank you, Dr. Yeager. I like that as well. Question regarding the higher level themes that are outlined on page eight. Are those things that we can maybe share somehow that maybe we could work with Mr. Birch just to share what we heard from our community and share it back that way? That way they know we've captured what they've shared with us. I think that's part of that transparency, right? So maybe we can work with our communications.
Yeah, excuse me.
Put them together on our website or...
Absolutely, excuse me. We can make this a public facing document, share a final iteration of this document. We can add a link or upload a PDF to the superintendent's search page and then suggest or offer the suggestion to Mr. Birch to communicate to the staff and your community, your constituents, that here's the summary report, here's what all of you have shared with us, here's what JG Consulting, excuse me, has prepared for your reference based on your engagement with them. So I think that's appropriate. I mean, we would encourage it, but it's not a requirement. But if you'd like to do so, it's your property. So if you want to share it publicly, you're more than welcome to.
Yeah, I like the idea, you know, at least all the information that's on page eight here. I think, you know, sharing that back and even some of the survey, the themes that came out from the survey so that the community knows, you know, what was being said and that we're at least, that we captured it. And if there's something missing, they'll let, you know, they can let us know if there was something outstanding that we didn't capture. So we'll work with Mr. Birch and his team. I think that's a solid idea.
Okay, wonderful. Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion. And I do, I think I speak for the team, but having a community welcoming of sorts for the incoming superintendent at whatever forum or format you feel is appropriate, I think that's a great idea. In fact, when you name your lone finalist or you vote to approve the superintendent, one of our recommendations at that point is to have some sort of celebration. Invite the superintendent, his or her family, to join in the official announcement. Perhaps you have like, if it's done publicly and you're able to do this in person, you might have like cake and punch or soft drinks. If you do this in your boardroom, you might have like a little breakout area, a little, a small reception. But then you could have a larger group welcoming meeting for everyone. So I think there's many things you can do and we can get creative about supporting you in that way to help with some other things that we've done with some of our other partners. But I think it's a good opportunity for the community, especially for the high level of engagement that everyone has demonstrated. I think it'll make them have a sense of ownership and feel, have that sense of ownership. So I think it's a terrific idea. And then the following, page nine, that's what we'll review on page one of the leadership profile. So the bullets on page nine is the actual leadership profile. And what I'll preface, the review of the leadership profile by saying is that this is really just a North Star. This is our light post. It's our guide. So you'll still have the opportunity, of course, to interview the candidates in person and/or virtually. We're still going to do the on-demand interviews and ask the really deep questions, the get in the weeds questions. This is really just a guide that is transferring the knowledge that we gained from listening to you, listening to your constituents, the staff, and even the students that we met with. So I want us to just be mindful that this isn't a perfect document. It's more so to help us with the advertising. It's more so to help us serve as a guide for the candidates. And it's a quick snapshot. It's not, doesn't encapsulate every little minute detail, but rather serve as a North Star. So if we can just keep that as a reminder, I think it'll help us kind of work through this knowing that the meat of what we'll do together is the recruiting on my team's behalf, the screening, the vetting, and then the interviews, the three types of interviews you'll have, the in-person, virtual, and the on-demand interviews. So you're going to have plenty and ample opportunity to get to know the candidates much deeper than just reviewing their letters of interest, their resumes, other artifacts. Candidates will look at this detail and it's almost a quick scan. They're going to look at the bullets. They're going to capture the highlights. But they're still going to apply, even if they don't check every single box. They'll apply because they feel that they can serve KCK well. And we will encourage them to apply. It's our responsibility as a team to screen and vet them and to bring you the best and brightest candidates for your consideration. So we'll bring you every candidate. We won't exclude any candidate, but we're going to identify who we feel are the best. And then we'll make our recommendations and then the board of education will make the final determination whether you agree or disagree with us and who you wish to bring in for interviews. So that's all I'd like to add, just as a way, by way of, as a preface. But that final page nine, that is the entry point to the leadership profile. It's essentially the job description.
The question I had is on page 10. I noticed that KASB was not mentioned. I know that we're part of KASB Association. So I think it would be important for us to have a listing on there or making sure that they have a posting or some sort of notification.
Yes, ma'am, we agree. And so the AAASA acknowledgement, the umbrella for all of the state affiliations, we have credit with them. So it's an automated posting. So we go through all the state affiliations and then we start from the top down. So AAASAKASB and then all the other affiliations across the country.
Great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for asking about that.
I think Wanda had a question. Paige?
No, I didn't.
Okay, thank you.
I had one, a few minutes, but Randy has said what I was going to say. Print that. That's all I was saying.
Awesome.
Thanks. I don't think I missed this. And I hope it's the right time. So when will something or some type of calendar be out where our public is able to see exactly what's going on? We've talked about the different things that will take place, but if the public want an easy access to be able to see a timeline, is that something that normally is posted to our website?
Absolutely, yes. So it hasn't been posted yet because we still need to finalize a few of the dates for the remaining milestones. As soon as we agree to those dates, Mr. Birch's team will update the timeline on the superintendent's search page. So we're just in a holding pattern at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Good. Well, I think that concludes just a brief review of the summary report. We'll take out the major themes. We'll ask that we make this a public facing document for our discussion this afternoon. We'll update the superintendent's search page in greater detail with the dates, those major themes and the consistent feedback. And at any point in time, if you are to receive a request for all of the data from the survey, just let us know. We can export that file. Just let whoever requests know that it's going to be rather lengthy. At a minimum, it'll be 200 pages. So it's good nighttime reading material, but it is very long. So if you receive any requests, just let us know. We'll be happy to export it for you.
James, and you might, you covered this earlier, but just a reminder for our board and for, well, for staff and anyone. Any questions or when someone wants to apply, they should be directed towards you and your team. So if someone reaches out to any of our board members or our board clerk or any staff members, please know that you should direct those inquiries directly to James and his team. And don't feel that, and we shouldn't actually try to answer any of those questions or fill folks in. It's really James and his team who will answer any of those inquiries. So please just, board members, staff, make sure that if you do have any requests. Now, if someone reaches out and wants information, that's okay, but direct them to James and his team.
So you direct those questions via, how do you want those questions to come to you? Email or how do they want to contact you?
Email, text message, phone call, whatever you feel comfortable with. But there's even a statement on the leadership profile, the application itself, that there's a statement that says that candidates are not to contact the board of education. We represent you and not, you know, not the candidates. I mean, we appreciate the eagerness and that they wanted to take the initiative, but there's a process in place for a reason. And we also want to protect their confidentiality. Because if they are to email you directly and, you know, there's correspondence there, if there's ever a public information request, then we're subject to releasing their information prematurely. So we make it very clear with the candidates that all communication goes through us. So in the spirit of confidentiality and managing the protocols and expectations accordingly. So, okay, well, let's take a dive into the leadership profile. It's the other document entitled KCKPS Job Profile and Application Draft. So still, this is in draft form, you know, it's not final. But the first page is exactly what you saw on page eight of the last document. So it's the common themes, the North Star that I keep referencing, with the feedback incorporated to what we've heard, everybody's voices that we've heard from during the community engagement piece. So at this time, we'd like to entertain input, feedback. If there's verbiage or language that, you know, we need to visit or to reconsider, we want to update this tonight so that way we can post the document tomorrow.
James, are you referring to the application draft? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, sir.
One thing we normally do on the section on non-discrimination is we add at the very end of it, we just say, "or any other basis prohibited by law", just to make sure we've covered everything.
Okay.
This is a catch-all. We just don't want to miss something.
Or any other...
Basis, basis prohibited by law.
Got it, okay.
I think you caught everything, but I just want to make sure we have some catch-all there.
Sure. Thank you.
I was thinking that maybe we should consider putting a salary range so that they would know at least what salary range we are looking for.
Yeah, we can do that. So if there's a range, the recommendation that we would make, because, you know, this will be commensurate with experience, of course, like anything in professional setting. If you have a minimum, a median, and a maximum, or at a just basic range, the low end and the high end, I think that would be great, just to give candidates some context of what, as a board of education, you're willing to pay the next leader. Or, you know, we can wait until we get towards the latter stages of the search and we get closer to the interviews, we can start updating. Um, or, you know, we can wait until we get towards the, the latter stages of the search and we get closer to the interviews, we can start updating candidates with potential salary. Right now, we're not receiving any inquiries about salary. It's more about the um, the dynamic of the district. Um, that, you know, the team, the Board of Education and the abilities to work well together. Those are always the primary questions that we get. Right now, there are, um, the questions that we're receiving are, are not related to salary. But if you feel it's appropriate at this time, we can update in that section on page um, I think is it page two? At the top where it says salaries and benefit. We can say negotiable and can, and keep the commensurate with experience, but then add us um, a statement there with a range of, of salary.
I would prefer to leave it as is until after, like you suggested later to add it in.
We can do that later. I just want to make sure that, that um, they clearly understand the salary ranges. So if they have questions, you guys can confidently answer that, and it doesn't have to be now. It could be later, but that you can confidently add it if, if there's any inquiry. Um, just like moving expenses and things of that nature, we want to make sure that it's clear for you so that there's no question.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think that's fair. What, what candidates most oftentimes do is they'll reference the outgoing, the, the previous, the predecessor's contract and salary data. Granted, that's, that's not always going to apply for the next leader. It could be lower, it could be higher, um, depending on the experience, the skill set and, and the compet, you know, the, the professional competence of, of the next CEO to serve KCK. So with that being said, that's why we generally wait until we get towards the end, because you may have a sitting superintendent in a larger school system who um, started his or her career in Kansas, but wants to return home. And so, you know, this is um, a different ambition or aspiration for that individual. So that's why I say it varies and commensurate with experience is pretty standard. So we don't want to pigeonhole uh, the Board of Education, the district into a particular salary, not just one number. So I think when we get to this crossroad down, down the road, we provide a range. So that way you have, you're not um, limiting yourself just based on a number. So I think it's good to start thinking about it. We should definitely talk about this as we start the screening and vetting process. And the commitment that I, that we as a search firm will make to you, once we start getting the inquiries for salary, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll reach out to uh, Board President Lopez and, and uh, Mr. Goheen and say, okay, now's the time where we should start putting pen to paper and start thinking about the salaries. But I think for now, we can just kind of let that dog rest until we get to that point. Any other comments about the first couple of pages of the uh, leadership profile? What I will say, the highlighted um, section where it says electronic submittals preferred, once this um, draft is finalized, um, our web technician will create a unique um, uh, job search page on our website, jgconsulting.us. We will maintain all of the records on your behalf. So when a candidate applies for the position, he or she will upload all of their artifacts, those letters of interest that we reference, resumes, academic transcripts. The verification form will require their signature and their um, uh, initials, any other artifacts they wish to, to provide. That all gets uploaded to our server. We export that to a different file where our team can start screening and vetting those, because they're, they're, it's on our backend of our office channel. And then any other advertisement like the K, K, KASB, double ASA, ALOS, NAVC, any other major outlet or a channel of communication. All of the advertisements will redirect back to jgconsulting.us. So we're the main hub. But the various advertisements will have the same URL that we will uh, customize for this search. So that's why it's highlighted right now, because we haven't created it yet. But we'll do that actually first, first thing tomorrow morning or even later tonight, once this is approved.
So to clarify, you guys will screen them and then that's when they'll do the on-camera interview. So there won't be any like, oh, we'll wait a week and then they'll, but it'll be pretty smooth flowing. So there's no bottlenecks.
That's correct. It's almost immediate. Um, the, the, the greatest challenge that a candidate could, could encounter is if they wait until the 11th hour to apply. So let's say, you know, they're waiting until the 29th day and there's 30 days to submit your application. Well, we won't know um, until the 29th day that they apply and they still have to complete the required uh, on-demand interview. So they're only giving themselves a day, really a couple of days, because there is a two or three-day lapse where there's a little bit of overflow before we present the candidates to you. But they won't have as much time if, if they're uh, waiting until the last minute to submit their materials. So if you're a candidate, listening and observing this meeting right now, please don't wait till the 11th hour. Do your homework, do your due diligence, submit your materials early. And we also too like to see the eagerness. So when candidates apply early, that demonstrates to us as a firm that they were ready, you know, as soon, they were just waiting for this to open. And so they're getting their materials in early. They're not waiting and procrastinating until the last minute.
And then one other question. Um, you mentioned that we would have access to seeing the candidates who apply. Will we have individual access or when will we see that access sent to us?
That, that will be done um, in executive session, in closed session, when we pick that date and time where we present the candidate. So if you recall from our last meeting, that's a lengthier meeting. So whether we do it over the course of a day or two consecutive days, we're gonna spend as much time with you as you'd like uh, to review all of the information. We're gonna provide each of you with the binder of all the printed resources, the, of, of the top 10. And then you'll have access to the delta, however many candidates are. So Group A is, is the recommend, recommendations of our team. And then Group B will be the delta, the remaining balance of candidates. But when we bring you the information, each of you will have your own customized binder. No particular order of the candidates. They're just arranged alphabetically by their last initial. And so we'll go through them one by one. So we'll start with the first candidate. You'll, you'll go to that tab. You'll start with the letter of interest, review the resume, academic credentials, the uh, verification form, any other artifacts that they provide. It'll be in your individual binder. Um, and once we're done spending 20 minutes or so with the review, well, on the, on the big screen, we'll have your on-demand interview portal open. And so we'll show you the video responses and the answers for that candidate that we just reviewed in the binder. And so that's why the meetings take as long as they do, because we're literally gonna go agnostium one by one and answer any questions you have of us about the candidates, because we'll know um, every, everything about the candidates. You know, we're also gonna do high-level social media scrubs. So if there's any articles that are out there on the web that we need to share with you that could, that um, uh, that could be, I guess, considered um, baggage, you know, we want you to, to be aware of everything. So, you know, it's, it's a lengthier meeting because the amount of information we're sharing with you. But we can only do that at the point in time when we present the candidates in that private consultation, because the confidentiality must be preserved and protected.
So James, will you be able to give us a little advance notice so that we can hash out the, the components of the contract, salary, et cetera, benefits before we meet with you, so we're not discussing it back and forth?
Absolutely. Yeah. So I've uh, received a copy. Uh, Ms. Smith provided me with a copy of uh, uh, Dr. Faust's previous contract. So I have some sort of foundation and understand what was done before. Um, so we can start working on those details now. And we've already started to kind of go through that process. We'll just need the, the salary range at some point. Um, but we'll be able to help you uh, customize a contract.
Okay. But this is what I'm saying. We need a little advanced time to do it internally before we have a discussion with you.
Abs, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we'll, we'll get, we'll get to the, uh, we'll provide that information and, and that report prior to our next meeting. So we're working on that now. Uh, we're just taking one step at a time. But the contract is something that we have, uh, we've received. So thank you, Mrs. Smith, for providing that. So we're in good shape there. Um, and we're starting to put pen to paper. So uh, the, the biggest, the biggest need will obviously be to identify the salary range at some point.
And I think what um, we're also trying to say is that we generally make decisions over multiple meetings. So if we know we have two board meetings before we see you again, it may be helpful if we start out a conversation in one board meeting and follow up in another big meeting so that it's, you know, we look at it, think about it, and then come back.
Yeah. No, that's fair. Yeah. Just let us know when you would like to have or what the sequence of meetings consists of. So if on, you know, meeting A, we're revisiting the contract terms and discussing the language of the contract and the salary range, you know, that could be, you know, priority number one, for example. The, the, the next meeting can be, okay, here's the date when we're going to discuss the candidates. Here is the, the, the scope and sequence for that day. What does the agenda look like? Without naming any of the candidates, of course, but just planning ahead. So that way, when we do meet with each other, we have uh, clear understanding of what our goals and objectives are. So if I may, if we can um, come back to the leadership profile, um, I'm assuming so there's no suggestions or questions about page one and the major themes. That brings us to page three.
Hey, James, real quick, I'm, I'm sorry. Um, just on that page two, um, just a clarification. Is there a, a number of list, list of references that we're asking for from candidates? And is there a particular type of reference that we're gonna um, be asking for? Is it really just dependent on the candidate themselves?
Yeah, it's open-ended. So some provide us with letters of recommendations. You know, we kind of leave references as a blank statement more so to give them an opportunity to give us as much as they want to provide. Um, so some might provide us with just a standard list of, a sheet of references, you know, contact information, uh, past or current supervisors. Other candidates may actually have formal uh, recommend, letters of recommendation from um, other elected officials in their respective communities, supervisors, board members, things of that nature. So we don't, we're not coaching the, so I think it's important to know, we don't coach the candidates. We want to see them take, do their due diligence, um, uh, take the, make the, the concerted effort to impress us, to impress you. And so we don't tell them exactly what to provide. So we keep it very basics. So that way they can really demonstrate to us how much effort they put into this. Uh, because you're gonna see quite a difference in some of the candidates' packets when you start to review them. I mean, we, we've seen and reviewed thousands of these, you know, every, every week. And so you can definitely tell who puts more energy into their, their packets than others. And I think that's a good indication of the strength of the, of the candidate. So however, uh, Board President Lopez, at the end, when we start checking the references, um, so like, let's say the top two finalists before the final round. In that case, we generally ask for four or five, where the Board of Education or my team can call specifically. So we're gonna ask them to pick their top four or five. And so we put a numerical value to that one, and it's typically no more than five.
Thank you.
And James, I, I have one question on the conditions of employment, and this may be just be inferred. But you want to put anywhere in here that they would have to be either eligible for or have the appropriate Kansas licensure at some point? That may be automatically inferred in the application process, but I do know that's a requirement. So.
Yeah, we can add it. But yes, uh, you're right. I mean, it's an inference that we all make. Um, yeah, it goes for every superintendent search nationwide.
Right.
Uh, yeah. Yeah. But if, if you feel better, um, if, if, if it create, it provides a great, greater peace of mind, we can certainly add it.
I was just thinking up where you had the criminal background and the fingerprinting that were required, that the, the eligibility for the licensure would be, you know, that's a, a deal breaker if somebody applies and they're not eligible for the licensure. So.
Okay. All right. Uh, so that brings us to page three with the timeline. So I think it'd probably be a good idea to discuss uh, the presentation of applicants. I know we kicked around a couple of dates. Um, but I think we should try to narrow a date down, um, so that way my team can plan if, if need be, be there in person with you or if this is virtual, whatever the case may be, uh, just so that we can have it all on our calendars, uh, my team and of course, all of you.
Yeah. And Board, uh, you all should have received an email from me with some potential dates. Um, I know we looked at that weekend of Friday, March 5th and 6th, or potentially um, that Saturday, the 6th. Um, um, Mr. Gadda has a conflict that, that day. We were thinking that we would try to gather, for those that were, that felt comfortable uh, in person and uh, Mr. Gadda potentially coming in. Um, that 6th, unfortunately, he would not be available on that Saturday. Other dates were March 1st through 3rd, that he could come in uh, to Kansas City to meet with us in person. Um, although I know Mr. Fraley is also available on uh, virtually and, and Dr. Leonidas as well. So it's just a matter of um, finding a date that works for everyone. Uh, yeah, it's important. So we'd love to have everyone there. And I would just, again, I know we all have busy, 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 crazy lives, but uh, would just please ask for um, a little grace and trying to flexibility and trying to get something um, scheduled. But I understand we have actual, you know, actual work and other stuff needs to get done. So I, I do understand that. So thank you.
Well, is that the survey we sent to Leslie? Is that?
Ye, yes, I believe Ms. Smith had uh, reached out to folks to see uh, some dates and times that would work for folks. Um, I don't think we found one date that worked uh, for every, everyone, unfortunately, but.
I'm flexible. I'll, I'll, whatever we choose, I will make sure that I'm there.
Is it possible for us to split it in two, as we had, someone had mentioned?
Yeah, I, I think if we need to get, get creative in how we do it, um, I, I would say, James, you, you think, you know, if we planned, you said this might be a longer meeting, so like a five-hour, six-hour, if we were to do it all in one day, but if we did a couple of days, you think about a three-hour, two and a half, three-hour per day in two days?
It's, yeah, it's, it's really hard to say, because a lot of it depends on the actual number of candidates that apply. Uh, you know, anticipating that there's gonna be strong interest. It might be, it might be, um, it might be best, or it might best serve us all if we at least have a fallback date. So I think if we pick one day and then have a contingency date, a consecutive day as Plan B. Um, I'm not saying that it'll be needed, but at least we have it in our calendars with just the fallback contingency plan in the event we need more time. Uh, because sometimes, sometimes these meetings can, will take only a few hours, but we've had some board partners that really want to um, discuss things in greater depth, which is perfectly fine. Those meetings can take six hours. So um, I, I want to avoid creating too much fatigue uh, for the board. So if, if it's best to just identify two consecutive days, we can spread it, spread our time amongst those two days. That might, might work.
Because the problem, Randy, is that, you know, if I'm working till five, then I couldn't approve, you can, I couldn't agree to two o'clock or at three o'clock, you know, but I could commit to a 4:30, four, 4:35 o'clock and the next day. I would just need to, you know, I, I could do that kind of breakdown.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah.
We, could we find out from Leslie, what are the choices? And maybe we could go beyond that?
Yeah. So uh, Leslie, I don't know if you have that information in front of you. I, I do know she communicated that um, March 2nd looked like it could work for most folks. Um, in the afternoon, again, I think to Dr. Jaeger's point, finding a time closer to the end of the workday, um, so that folks could all be present. Although I, I know, Dr. Nguyen, you've got some responsibilities in Topeka until about five o'clock every day, Monday through Thursday. Is that right? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So it'd have to be after five o'clock on, on any day, Monday through Thursday. Um, you know, I, I wonder, I know we were thinking about a Saturday too, and, and Dr. Jaeger, that first Saturday wouldn't work anyways. Would, if we pushed it out to the 13th, which is a Saturday, it's a week later. I know that bumps up to spring break um, potentially for some, some folks. Uh, James, I don't know how that looks on your calendar for you and your team or the rest of the board. I don't know.
That's my first vacation in two years.
But what about like the, a Tuesday and Wednesday, 5:30 to eight, you know, 5:30 to eight?
Or what about Saturday, the 6th, beginning at 12 noon until we get through?
Yeah, I have, but I have appointments starting at noon.
Okay.
But I could do like an earlier morning, but. Leslie, you're, you're on mute.
So.
So eight to noon on that Saturday will work for everyone. Dr. Nguyen, does that work for you?
The, the 13th?
The 6th.
Oh, I thought James wasn't available on 6th.
He is virtually, oh, no, that's right, okay. James, are you available on the 6th?
No, we, we have our graduation and our co, leadership cohort for aspiring superintendents that we can, I'll be in San Francisco. Now, the state of California, what I shared with Board President Lopez, state of California has a, a pretty rising number of COVID cases. So we've been pushing out our academy graduation several times now. So there's a chance that it'll get pushed again, and if that happens, I can be there in person, but what I can commit to is participating virtually, but I can't be there in person.
Well, Saturday, any Saturday would work for me best.
Could we do it like Friday evening on and then Saturday morning? Can we start on a Friday evening and continue that Saturday morning?
Friday evening, five to nine? That Friday, five to nine, and then?
I can probably make it early on a Friday, because I'm here today at three.
So could we do that Friday at three? And then continue on that Saturday morning?
Friday, March 5th at five.
He says she could do it earlier.
Are you available? You say you wouldn't be available until five.
Well, but Friday, we usually don't meet at my afternoon. So I could, I could tentatively say, hey, three o'clock, we're here at three o'clock, or three thirty, like we were today.
Yeah.
Would that work, Yolanda?
Yeah, I prefer three thirty if at all possible. But yes, they split.
How would that work with virtual, James? With the binders, et cetera?
Yeah, great question. So what I would do is ship the binders to Mr. Goheen or to Mrs. Smith, or whatever Mr. Goheen suggests. But you'll have to sign out for the binders, because again, once they're in your possession, they, they become subject to open records requests. Now, once the meeting concludes, when we review and finalize the meeting, whether it's a day or two days, those binders must be returned to the person that they, who received them, whether that's Mr. Goheen or Mrs. Smith. Because if you take them in your possession, again, the confidentiality component basically gets thrown out the window. So you'll have to pick up, you have to dedicate or designate a place and a time and a person to get the, receive the binders from.
Like we did with choosing our board clerk, if we came down to MVP and the biker stay at the law firm, we don't take them, we just use them while we're meeting.
That's what, that's exactly what I was gonna suggest, because I think if you send them to the clerk, they become a school record.
Yeah, that, that's what we did last time we met at your office, didn't we, Greg? And we never took them out of the building.
I'm just unable to meet in person, though.
Well, I could figure something out.
Figure something out for me.
Okay, so then Friday, March 5th, we have three thirty to seven thirty maybe? And then that Saturday, March?
Your volume is low, it's hard to.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
That's better.
Okay, so we have Friday, March 5th, three thirty to seven thirty. Would that work for everyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, then the, then eight o'clock that next morning.
Saturday, March 6th, from eight to noon, would that work?
That works for me.
Ms. Clark, does that work for you? I'm sorry, I can't see you.
Ms. Drew says yes.
All right.
Yes.
So James, does that work for you?
Yeah, so I'll get with Mr. Goheen and the appropriate address, where to send the materials. We'll ship them via FedEx. We'll have all the documentation arranged in there. I'll provide the instructions that we'll go through to identify who, who your selections of candidates are for round one of interviews. We have a rubric that we'll provide to you, but we'll join you virtually during those, those dates and those times. So if, if March 6th is needed, be there the morning of March 6th. Definitely, of course, March 5th during the designated timeframe. But all of it will make much clearer sense when you have, have it in front of you. If you're like me, I'm a visual guy, so. We'll have, we'll have the binders inside one of the pockets of the folders, we'll have the rubric. You'll, when you, when we do the tallying, you'll do that quietly amongst yourselves. You're gonna be asked to choose your top five, and then you'll write in your top five selections. We will tally, or I'll say we, if, if Mr. Goheen is present, we'll ask him to collect those rubrics, the scoring documents, and tally the votes. So wherever there is a majority amongst the Board, that's how the candidates will be selected for round one of interviews. And, and historically speaking, it's usually anywhere from five to six candidates that will be invited for round one, based off of our, our practice of doing this a number of times. So really straightforward, he'll keep, he'll keep the binders and maintain those documents. You can write in the binders, we encourage you to scribe in them, write your notes all over the binders. You'll write your name in the binders and leave your forms there with Mr. Goheen. And then when we return for the final, for the first round of interviews, you'll have, you'll have those binders again to reference and to, to work from as you're interviewing the candidates. So pretty straightforward. And then the on-demand interviews, what I'll do is I'll send Mr. Goheen email with access to the dashboard of all the online interviews. So Mr. Goheen, what we'll need is a display, a screen of some sort for everyone. And then for Dr. Jaeger or anyone who's not going to be there in person, what we'll need to do is ensure that, that the technology transmits the on-demand interviews virtually. So like if we're using Zoom, whoever is controlling the Zoom will need to share the screen so that whoever is dialing in remotely can see the on-demand interviews.
We've got a conference room.
Yeah. If, if you want to make me a co-host or somebody on my team a co-host, we can control the on-demand interviews to make it easiest.
Yeah, that, that should be perfectly fine. I think we've got two or three conference rooms that could be used, but we'll probably use the big one and so we can space it. It's got whatever, from a technology standpoint, it's got whatever we need.
Perfect, yeah. And, and just as, as a matter of protocol, of course, this, this particular meeting is closed, so it's, it's your Board Council, it's us, the three of us, and then the Board of Education, and that's it. No members of staff are present. This is a private consultation, so we're gonna do some good work together. And that's gonna be the exciting time where we get to finally share all of the, the news with you. So the, the secret and the cat will be out of the box at that point. Any other questions?
James, do you want to set the candidate interview dates now or naming of lone finalist? Or do we want to wait a while? How do you want to do that?
I will defer to the Board on that one, whatever they feel is best. But I think it's, we can, we can certainly do that today if you guys feel prepared to do so.
Do you have any recommendations? James, and I think, I can't remember, I, I know you and I talked about the timeline a little bit after that initial March meeting. Typically, do you have some thoughts on when would be good, like the week of March, whatever, for candidate interviews or?
Yeah, generally, we like to give candidates at least a two-week runway to plan for travel. So if they're, you know, flying in or coming in from a, a different state, just as a professional courtesy, giving them a two-week window. However, once this timeline is confirmed and we have it available for public consumption, the candidates will do whatever is necessary. So they're gonna work around your schedules. I'm, I'm more concerned about your availability than we are about the candidates. Availability, because they're gonna do, they want this job, they're gonna make it happen. So I would, I would say, pick the dates that work best for everybody collectively for both rounds one and two, and then the candidates will work around your schedules.
Are there a number of dates and, and like time, timeframes that you think we should hold? Like three days for that first round of interviews or?
Two, two consecutive days at a minimum for the first round. And then if time permitting, you can do the final round, because it's generally the top two in one day. But the, the first round, I would, I would say to be on the, to, to be more conservative and just to be on the safer side, two consecutive days. So one hour should be allotted for round one of interviews per candidate. So like, let's say hypothetically, if you were to start in the late afternoon, like we're doing on March 5th, and this is just a hypothetical, an example, you could start your interview day at three thirty. The first half hour, we'll work with, with the, with the Board, level set expectations, review potential questions with you, identify what the cadence of each interview will look like. And then you could begin your first interview, like, let's say, at four PM. You'll have four to five, and then we'll have a 10-minute break or 15-minute break in between the first and second. And then another hour with the second candidate, and then a final hour with the third. So that, that way you're not experiencing interview fatigue, because it's also very stressful for the Board, you know, and it's not just stressful for the candidates, but for you as well. So we will conclude that first day, that can be done on a weekday, a weekend. Again, the candidates will work around your schedules. So really, the, the objective here is to just pick dates that work best for everybody on the Board. But two consecutive days for round one, and then round two. This is subject to COVID, so if you're able to have an, share a meal with the candidate, the two finalists, it's a, it's a common practice to where you might have a brunch, a lunch, or dinner with the finalist. And they'll bring his or her, you know, significant other, their spouse, their partner to join you, and you'll start by sharing a meal with the individual, the candidate. And then once the meal finishes, a member from the consulting team can entertain their partner, their spouse, show them around town, show them some of the schools, just the community, answer questions they might have while you have a deeper conversation with the candidates. Those final interviews, we would recommend at least allotting an hour and a half, because that's really where you get into the weeds of asking some of the questions that perhaps you wish you would have asked in round one that you just didn't get to. But, you know, this is such a big decision, you know, you want to spend as much time as you need with each of the two finalists. And so that's why we say, if you can do it in a day, great, but don't feel like you need to rush it. If you want to spread it over two days, you can do that as well.
So what if we did round one, the 19th and the 20th of March?
Well, I was actually gonna suggest the 26th and 27th.
Twenty-six.
Two weeks, and plus the, the week of the 19th, the spring break for some folks potentially.
Okay.
So we want to, so I, I was thinking the 26th, 27th, Friday afternoon and Saturday. That gives candidates two weeks to, to get their travel arrangement and get spring break out of the way.
That sounds good to me.
If folks would, would, Dr. Jaeger?
And we're talking about March, right?
Yes, I'm sorry, March.
I just know the, the Passover begins that Saturday.
Six and twenty-seven works for me.
Dr. Nguyen?
Let's say yes.
Yolanda?
Supposed to go to a regional, but I can, you, I'll be here.
Yolanda?
I just checked, that works for me as well.
So twenty, March 26th and 27th, that gives plenty of time for people to make travel arrangements.
And just so I'll know, we're saying 26th and 27th, the 26th more, because it's a working day, we're reserving that entire day? Is that what I heard?
I would say the afternoon, like we did today, three thirty on, and then the 27th, that Saturday, we could start at eight thirty or whatever.
Yeah.
Yes.
If y'all wouldn't mind holding those dates on your calendars. James, does that, I guess I should check with y'all. Does that work on your guys' calendar as well for you and your team?
Yes, so we have, yeah, we have other interviews taking place a day, but we have teams of folks all around, so there's coverage there. So those days work. You know, for me, they work. I can't, you know, I'm not speaking on behalf of Alton and Pat, just due to COVID. You know, I'm one of three people that's traveling right now.
Well, and let me just say that on the 27th, that is the day that I teach my doctoral class virtually all day long. So I am virtually with my doctoral students from 8:00 AM until four thirty. So I will be zooming with them, so I have to apologize on that.
I can do the 27th. We have final rounds for another district on the 25th and 26th. Either I or Steve could do that one. And then I could do the 26th, 27th also.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so I will be there, I will be there for sure on both, on both dates, so you can count me in. And really, only one of us needs to be there in person, but I'm adding it to my calendar now.
Thank you, guys. Do we, do we want to look at final round of interviews and some possible dates for that?
Well, it doesn't hurt, I think we need to get ahead of the game.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Starting budget pretty soon, so let's get it.
Get it in there.
I know that next week, to Dr. Jaeger's point, that, you know, Passover starts that 27th, and then Easter, Easter holidays. So I would be sensitive to that as well.
That takes us to the April 9th and 10th. If you wanted to, evening one and then a noon one on Saturday?
So if we did, James, if we did a similar ninth and 10th, the Friday and Saturday for that final, the final interviews, does that align with kind of your thought, thought process?
Yeah, that, that could work. That's a little more than a week time between round one and, and the final round. My only caution is we don't generally like to let too much time lapse. Just, you know, that, so that way, you know, information isn't leaked prematurely. But if, if those are the best dates, yeah, let's go with those. So if I heard you correctly, you said the 9th and the 10th?
Yeah.
Yolanda, Dr. Dr. Jaeger?
Yeah, I just checked both of my calendars, that should be fine. And we're thinking the same setup, like a three thirty, three or three thirty?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
Dr. Jaeger, do, do those dates work okay for you?
Yes, that's fine.
Rocking and rolling here, y'all. What's next, James? Do you need some more dates from us?
No, well, I think the only thing to consider is you could name your lone finalist if you felt comfortable after the, the final interview on the 10th. Or, you know, if you'd like to sleep on it and schedule it for another day. I don't know how soon thereafter, the 10th, you have your next board meeting. Do you by chance know what that date is?
The 13th.
The 13th, okay. So if you wanted to wait and, and then officially name, add an item to the agenda to name your finalist during the 13th, you could. Or if you wanted to come out of the executive session after you deliberate on the, on the 10th, and then take action to name a lone finalist, you, you're, you're within your right to do that, unless Board Council has an objection to that.
I don't know if I would want to name the finalist or the finalist on a Saturday.
Can we double, can we double check as well as our next board meeting, the 13th or the 6th? Is my calendar off?
We're talking about April.
Uh-huh, I'm in April.
Yeah, it should be the 13th.
Okay, all right.
The first Tuesday from the 6th.
It's the 6th.
Yeah. And then the last, the 27th would be the last meeting for them.
So then, um, I think since you already have the meeting scheduled, you're all planning to be there on the 13th. You know, we name, we name the lone finalist. Um, if you are comfortable after deliberations on the 10th and you have a general idea, or you, you feel confident and you feel comfortable, at least informing the candidate, he or she could be present if you wish on the 13th to acknowledge him or her. And then they could even say a few words publicly, you know, addressing the, the Board of Education, thanking you, thanking the community and addressing, you know, addressing the staff. So I think that gives them notice as well. Um, if you want them to be there publicly, they, they could be. Um, but that's at your discretion, whether you think that's appropriate at that time or not.
Like their suggestion.
What if we waited till the 27th? At least you're giving him or her time to turn around and get it together. I don't know where the person might be.
And they might need to give, um, notice to their current employer.
Yeah, well, if they're in the final, if they're in the final stages, if they're the final two, their current employer will know before, beforehand. They'll, because we'll, we'll, we'll encourage them to, encourage them to, to disclose that. I mean, there, there should be no surprises at that point. And also too, references will be, uh, be checked leading up to the final, the final two. Um, so they'll need to notify their references that we're, we'll be contacting them to get that one last clean bill of health before, before they go into their final round with you.
I agree, it would be great to have it at the board meeting. That way they know and we know and we can, um, just move forward from there. And that way they can make a nice statement and then we can continue on with our meeting. It's not, especially if they're coming from out of state, it's gonna take a minute for them to get certified, certified in Kansas, because it does take a while. But at least, um, our, the community will be updated and know what the decision was instead of making them wait.
So from the education, uh, standpoint, when you get a new superintendent and they start somewhere, do they start with their new contract date? So I hear the announcement, I'm trying to figure out what the start date is in comparison to other corporations.
So this is, so this is an approval, you're naming your lone finalist. Um, you know, at that point, the contract will have, will not have been approved yet. So that's gonna be, um, uh, an action item to be, um, completed by the board and along with your board council. And, and then the candidate, the candidate may or may not have legal representation, for example, where they might want to have somebody add an extra set of eyes on the language and the verbiage, um, to ensure that, you know, their bases are covered. So whatever that length of time may be to, to complete that action item, you know, that's, that could be a matter of days, that could be a week, you know, I don't know. But beginning actual service of employment, uh, I don't know, Mr. Goheen, what are your thoughts about the turnaround time for getting the contract approved? I mean, what's your experience in the state of Kansas?
It just depends on the candidate. They, they can't, uh, I can't remember who said it, but they can't start actually working the position until they have it approved. That usually takes a little bit of time. Uh, the start of the fiscal year is in the school year is July 1st, so that's, that's an easy date for the start date. Um, but if they want, um, want them on site sooner than that, that could be done as long as we get the contract and licensure done.
Okay, so although the announcement has gone public, they still, I'm sorry, they're still under, maybe could possibly still be under contract with their other districts, so they would complete their time there and then make the transition once their actual contract starts with us, whatever that agreed-upon date is.
Correct.
And last time, what took a long time was the licensure from Kansas because it was out of state. So that, that's a long process. So that's what I've seen is the suitor, they can get that process started, entered, and we wait a couple of months. Then, you know, it should be smooth sailing, unless of course they already have a Kansas licensure.
Okay.
Yeah, the reciprocity varies from state to state. I don't know the length of time it will take. Uh, you know, we'll, we'll create some urgency with the candidates to ensure that they're on top of that. We'll work with your staff internally to make sure they have the appropriate paperwork to, to at least initiate that process. Um, and generally that begins with HR. We'll all work with Mrs. Smith, though, to get to the right staff member to make sure that the paperwork is at least completed and submitted to the State Department.
Yeah, I think it took, I think it took a little over a month last time to get that done.
Yeah, yeah, and our experience right now, it, the timeframe has been a little bit lengthier and I don't attribute it to, um, anything other than really the, the, the system has slowed down. The state departments have slowed down because of COVID. You know, we're doing this in other states and, and going through a similar exercise right now as we speak. And, um, you know, it's, uh, the, the system is just, the pendulum is swinging much slower than what we're accustomed to. Um, but we'll create some urgency the best we can. But I think this is good. I think we, uh, got quite a bit accomplished today. Are there any other questions or comments or things that we should address, um, as it pertains to the leadership profile?
James, just one quick comment and, and nothing that we need to really get into, dive into today. Uh, we talked about it a little bit, and I know some other board members have brought it up and in the town halls it came up. But, um, opportunities for, um, for continued feedback from the community. I know we're gonna have a survey there. Um, I, I question that did continue to pop up during the town halls was, you know, who will be within the interview process and what creative ways can we get community feedback or questions, um, for the, the candidates? So I know that's come up a few times and, and, and has been, been brought to me from other board members. So just something to, to percolate on and, uh, think about, um, how we can creatively, while still honoring the confidentiality piece of the candidates, because I know that's super important.
Yeah, one thing that we could suggest or offer for consideration is, you know, we can create, you know, a Google form or something where candidate, uh, candidate, excuse me, community members, staff, anyone interested in providing input, um, by way of the, the interviewing process can perhaps submit potential questions, uh, for the board to consider to ask the candidates. We've done that before, that's as far as we've gone, um, by way of including the community. Um, this is still, in our opinion, the Board of Education's responsibility. It's your sole employee. Um, that's why even us as a, as your search firm, we don't participate in the interviews. Uh, we'll help you, we'll, we'll, as I like to say, we'll be your, your interview sherpa. But aside from that, the interview in itself is the responsibility of the board. So we're sensitive to the request and we appreciate the eagerness to be a part of it. But if the board wants to entertain any input, uh, the only thing that I would suggest at this time is allowing them to submit potential questions that you can screen and vet for appropriateness to maybe ask the candidates. But as far as getting to meet the candidates, engaging with the candidates, your talent pool will diminish in a matter of seconds if a candidate becomes aware that the community will be involved in the search process, the interview process. And so we don't want our hard work as your search firm and all the hard work that we've done and completed up to this point to be, to, to diminish, uh, just for the sake of including, uh, a number of different groups or individuals that are not elected to serve on the board. Um, so don't mean that to say that we're not insensitive to the request, but we recognize that the importance of confidentiality will, um, could be detrimental to the outcome of your, 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 the strength of your talent pool. And the last thing we want to do is diminish the strength of the talent pool, um, by compromising the confidentiality.
Well, James, this is not necessarily for me, but you mentioned earlier in this conversation that we have a very active community and you stated that, you stated that you were on point there. So as we're kind of recapping and ending, when we think about our community and what we've outlined for today, can you kind of give some bullet points of where the community can be involved? So right now we have, we had our town halls, we had a survey. Um, are there any other places so that they know where they can be involved as well? And we've covered all those bases.
Yeah, and I think just the last statement that I made, I think if, if it's the will of the board, if they are in alignment or agreement to the last suggestion about providing potential questions, you could make those questions a public-facing document. Um, but the, the, the flip side to that is if you make it public-facing, the candidates will have a leg up on what questions you're going to ask them. And so I prefer in an interview setting, the element of surprise, right? You, you know, when we were interviewed, uh, by, by the board, we had no idea what you were going to ask us. So, you know, you want to, to see how, how quick the candidates can think on their feet, the authenticity of their responses and their answers. So, you know, the work has to be engendered in trust. So if, if I were in your shoes and I wanted to continue to involve the community, you can invite them to submit potential questions and you can say to them authentically, we're, we're, we will use your questions, but to not give any candidates a leg up, if you will, in the interview process, we're going to keep those private, but you're welcome to provide us with sample questions that we can ask in the interview process. That's as far, and that's just coming from me. I don't know if Alton or Pat have a suggestion, but that's as far as I would go, just to protect confidentiality.
Makes sense.
Let me add this, be careful about making promises that you really can't keep. There are some questions that may come to you, wouldn't I be appropriate to ask?
Oh, yeah, I was.
Say, we'll talk about consideration.
I did think about that in James's response, it's like, no, we may, we may ask questions that get us to the same, to the same answer. But yes, I am very familiar with interviewing, thank you. Good point, though, I'm glad you said that out loud publicly, so it could be heard.
Ms. Drew, you had a, your hand up.
Yes, I, I was just saying, I think we're getting enough feedback from the community by the fact that they have been invited to the town hall to give us some ideas and some suggestions, as well as doing this survey. We want to stay within the realm of making sure that we don't put ourselves in a bad position. So we have solicited enough information from them through the town hall meetings and the survey, and that should be enough. Just my opinion.
Thank you. All right, well, I do want to respect everyone's time. We're getting close to 5 o'clock on a Friday afternoon. James, I, I do appreciate you and your team, Alton, Dr. Wehna, it's great to see you always. Um, James, I, I don't know if there was anything else that you wanted to make sure we covered or, um, board members? Were there other questions or thoughts that you wanna, you wanna ask before we finalize today? Hearing none, wow. Uh, thank you all again, thanks so much for the, the hard work. Um, James, you know, continue to, to let us know if you need anything from, from the board. You can always access myself, Ms. Smith, or any other board members, Mr. Goheen. Board members, if you do have other questions or thoughts, uh, on the profile, uh, you know, let us know. Otherwise, um, this will be put out tomorrow, correct, James, the leadership profile?
Yes, sir, yeah, I'll work on it this evening. We'll have our web technician, he's aware, um, that he's got a project to complete, um, this weekend. I spoke with him earlier today. Um, so yes, we'll have it made for public consumption tomorrow. Um, I'll update the summary report, make those subtle changes that we discussed. I've already changed some of the language with the, uh, legal verbiage that Mr. Goheen referenced. So it's ready to go. Um, we just need to get it finalized and, and, and in the format that's, uh, appropriate for our webpage. So it should be made for, um, public consumption tomorrow.
Great. Mr. Goheen, do we need to formally approve any of that before it goes out? Or are we good, um, just with the conversation?
Um, I, I think you're good with the conversation. I suppose that if you wanted to be, uh, super conscientious, you could approve the, um, I don't know what the, what the right phrase, you call the document, the one I'm looking at says, says, uh, publication for application or something like that. You could, you could prove it. Correct.
We, 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 uh, we're a very diligent team, as you can sense. Um, we provide this information in advance in the spirit of collaboration, but it's not required, um, to take action or to approve. We, I like to say, we want your blessing, so that way we can start the process. Uh, but if you, if you make, if it makes you feel more at ease or comfortable taking action to approve it, what's, whatever you'd like to do, we, we do this as a professional courtesy, so that way we have your input and your feedback.
I think, I think we, we've had a good discussion, so if someone feels the need to, I think we're, we're good with the conversation. All right, well, again, thank you all so much. You know how to contact James, board members, if you have additional questions specific to, to him and his team or otherwise. Thank y'all so much. Have a great weekend.
You too.
Have the journey, thank you.
Have a great.
Bye, everyone.